Okay. Members of appeals, we now come to our please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
He said it was.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Gisano?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Kalman?
Present.
Mr. Kalman?
Present.
Mr. Kalman?
Present.
Motion to adjutant the meetings, the Minister of West.
No move, Mr. Chairman has read.
Second.
September 21st. Motion made by Mr. Kalman. Did you two get this call?
Second.
Sent by Mr. Cole. And here's Mr. Mendez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First case will be 200 Janus Street. Petitioner Ronald McClellan, trustee by his attorney Stephen E. Kylie, to allow division of an existing lot in zone R1 into two lot C and lot D, and approval to construct a single-family residence on new lot D. If approved, new lot C shall have less than the minimum required area, 7,850 square feet, and fringes 35 feet, and new lot D shall have less than minimum required area, 7,365 square feet.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Stephen Kylie. I'm attorney with offices at Fort Lakeview Avenue and Lynn, and I represent the petitioner. I assume that you have a copy of the plan. I'll lay one out here, just in case. The plan was prepared by Reed Lance surveyors. It's an instrument survey, so it was done with surveying instruments. The lot in question is approximately 15,000 square feet. My client, whose family has owned the property for many, many years, at least 35 years, wishes to divide the lot into two lots of approximately 7,000 square feet each, 7,500 square feet each, and construct a new, a single-family residence on the newly created lot. And they will maintain the existing residence on the other lot. There is a garage on the lot where the new construction is planned to be done, and that's going to be torn down to accommodate a single-family home. The existing house will have room for two off-street parking spaces. The new home, that's to be constructed, has a two-car garage next to it, and so there shouldn't be any issue concerning parking. My client went to the neighbors, and all of the neighbors, if I may, Madam Chairman. Thank you. I have copies. All of the abutting neighbors are, signed a letter indicating that they were in favor of the project. As I say, that my clients have been there for about 35 years. As a courtesy, I dropped a copy of the plan off to Paul Storkus, who is the president of the Slus Pond Association, and he indicated that he had no problem with it. There are several similar homes that have been recently constructed on Millard Avenue and Janus Street. I think there are a total of five, three on Millard Avenue and two on Janus Street. And they, the ones on Janus Street have approximately 5,000 square feet. The ones on Millard Avenue are approximately 8,000 square foot lots. So I think that the plans that my clients have is consistent with what's been going on in the neighborhood. I actually think it would be an improvement in the neighborhood because it would result in the removal of a deteriorated structure, the old garage, and the construction of the new home. So I would respectfully request that you grant the petition. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have a set of plans?
I don't have plans for the house itself, no. I have, I have the...
Does it look like any plan, the houses in the area?
Yes, I mean, the idea, the idea is to construct something that is similar to...
So, one of those in the neighborhood?
That, that's the intention, yes.
Could you name an address where the house is similar to that?
Well, I think that a couple of the newly constructed houses on Millard Avenue are similar, you know, not exactly the same, not identical, but similar. And I think a couple of the newly constructed houses on Janus Street are also similar as well.
Okay, so the petitioner is aware that it should follow the neighborhood?
Yes, yes, well, I mean, obviously, they're going to be looking to market it, and I think they're going to need to build something that's going to be harmonious with, with the neighborhood. Yeah, certainly.
But we don't know how many bedrooms is going to be or anything. You could put anything up in that one.
Well, I think we, you know, we would be governed by the restrictions of the zoning ordinance in terms of what can be built there, how high it can be, how high it can be, so on and so forth. It's obviously going to be a single-family home because it's not a one residential district. You know, again, their intention is to build something that's harmonious with, with what exists in the neighborhood at the present time.
Yeah, I sort of agree with the chairman of the neighborhood. You know, we'll have to see how the vote goes, but you could always make it a stipulation that a set of plans be submitted before it gets signed off. And you could stamp them. And if there's any issues, we could, we could always bring them back.
We're certainly fine with that.
No, because we normally do not just give somebody a blanket approval on a plot plan.
Understood.
Yeah, and that's only because we don't want it to impact negatively on existing neighborhoods.
Right.
So...
Well, the family, the family is going to retain the other house, and they live there.
You could furnish instead of plans.
Yes.
If it were, if it were a town.
Yes, absolutely.
Which house do they live in? Sergeant. The one in back.
They live in the existing structure that's shown on the plan. It's on, the structure on lot C.
It's on the lot.
It's one single row, right?
Yeah. One other question, because it's difficult to tell whether, it's got to be easement next to their property?
That's a, that's a, that's a right-of-way that I believe the city owns that runs down to the pond. Yeah, I don't think it's ever been used. I live in the area, and I don't think it's ever been used in 30 or 40 years, to the best of my knowledge. And according to my clients, it's really never used.
Yeah, I think they have a boat ramp down there.
They may have at one point in time, yeah. But this, this does not impact that.
So, can, can a car on the existing lot, now that you're cutting it up, can it, can either one of those cars actually go down, go down the incline to the house? Or does it have to go over the, the right-of-way?
It does not have to go over the right-of-way.
It can go down on its own.
That's correct, yeah.
My problem is, it's not staked. When I go out there, all I see is a piece over here, and then you could get killed going down that area of that, is that that 30-foot wide piece?
The, the right-of-way is to the right, as you face...
Very steep.
It's to the right. Yes, it is, at the end of it, it's very steep, absolutely.
You look down when you see this other house. I have no idea, even looking at this piece of paper, this is like a jigsaw puzzle. And, and everybody knows that I, I want to see things staked. I want to know what I'm, what I'm going.
Well, I certainly, I mean, this was done by Reed Lance surveyors. It's an instrument survey. I honestly don't know whether he staked it or not.
It has to be tall, red-staked, so that anybody can go down and see exactly where the house is going to be and where the property line is.
Yeah, that's normal, speaking.
Well, I certainly can ask, I certainly can ask Reed to do that.
He doesn't have all the time.
Yeah, then, I mean, I'd be surprised if he didn't do it in this particular case, because he knew we were coming to the...
Yeah, you got to be questioning.
Okay, okay.
So I think I would rather see it staked, and I would rather see what your plans are with the house.
Okay, well, if you don't mind, then, if we can continue with to the next meeting, and I'll bring plans in, and I'll ask Reed to stake the, stake it.
The next meeting is May 2nd. Is that all right?
Yeah. You, there's not another one in April?
Well, there usually is, but it's not going to be this time.
Okay.
So too many people on occasion.
Okay, well, May 2nd is it then? And we'll bring in the plans for the house, and we'll ask Reed to stake it in the interim. Okay?
And also, the line between the stakes, you've got to straighten it like you want. Just because it's hard for people to visualize the shape and footprint of the house.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask Reed to do that.
The motion not be postponed?
I'll make a motion to adjutant to the May meeting. Please, please. May 2nd.
May 2nd.
May 2nd.
May 2nd.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll submit that through ISD.
Motion made by Mr. Kalman, seconded by Mrs. DeShaw, for continuous for May 2nd. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Ah, yes, continue.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
How many is he calling? Mrs. Kalman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kalman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. Counselor Lozzy, did you want to say anything in case you can't make the next meeting?
I'm listening. I agree with Attorney Kylie. That right-of-way has never had a boat ramp in my lifetime. It's a particular right-of-way that the topography doesn't accommodate the ability to put one. And in any event, it's not, you asked a very good question whether they would use it for access, and the answer to that is no. I will go along with the wisdom of the Board, if you wish to see stakes and...
We have a level four, you know, which will be read the next time when we continue the meeting.
Reasonable and understood. Right, thank you.
Okay, we'll see you May 2nd.
Thank you.
Case number 9784, 14 Mayfair Street. Petitioner Daniel Thompson, allow construction of a rear addition measuring 14 by 34.3 in zone R1, where the addition will be closer than 7.5 feet from the property line and result in more than 30 percent lot-building coverage.
These are for you. These are just a copy of a set of plans. There's some photographs, and there's letters from both of my directors. Sorry, Daniel Thompson, 14 Mayfair Street. I live there with my wife, Teresa Thompson. And I'm here tonight, I also have a couple copies of some full-side plans, if anyone wishes to review those as well. I'm here tonight requesting a variance for, as the mentioned, left side is approximately eight inches too close to my neighbor, and are approximately 1% over on the total lot coverage. We had the lot surveyed by Chuck Fayer of Fayer &amp; Pearson's, and the plot plan is submitted in your package as well. The architect for the project was John Kroll from Deer Hill Architects. What we're essentially adding is 14 feet onto the rear of the house, so that we can, so my wife and I can add on a bedroom and extend our kitchen and a bathroom. We're expecting twins, and so we need a little bit more room for, you know, we're kind of outgrowing the house, so...
Is it for us?
Yes, yes, very surprised.
So, for that, you have a child?
Yes, yes. I have a 15-month-old too, so between the two...
I'm Irish.
Yeah.
Are you Irish?
I am, half-Irish, half-Italian.
Now, it's a good thing that you have these great pictures here. Because I was there Sunday, and the door downstairs was open.
I told you, my wife was a nurse, she works at night. She was sleeping with my, with my daughter, who has a little, little bit of a fever. So she did, she did see you guys, but she just didn't, you know, with the baby. And I had run to Dunkin' Donuts, and then by the time I was gone back, you guys were gone.
I rang the doorbell.
The door you've never been to, you're scared.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's how you want it, sorry.
Well, if I rang the bell downstairs, then I hauled the middle open door, and I went upstairs, and I rang the bell, I banged on the door, then I said, "Oh, I'm just doing the backyard." But I don't know what kind of a door you have, but he was not happy that I was going to try and open that door.
He's a golden retriever, he usually would lick you to death more than he'd bite you.
Well, usually they would, but I didn't take the time to see what kind of door he was in. I still wouldn't have gone in there. But these pictures are very informative.
So if you look at, I actually have, have it staked. I drew, I drove two stakes in the ground, and I attached surveying ribbon to them as well.
Do you have, what, what type of a room are you going to put on here? I mean, what's the building? What does it look like?
The building is essentially, as you can see here on this set of plans, is a building section here. And it is essentially an extension of our, of our existing kitchen, and then the construction of a master bathroom and bedroom. And so we'll, we'll be moving out of our bedroom, that'll become the twins' room, and then we'll have a new place to reside. If you look here on the, on the floor plan, which is constructed, this is our existing residence. This, this dash line that you see here, will be taking this wall down and expand the kitchen out, so that we can have three high chairs in there at the same time. And this will be bathroom and a master bedroom. And the side in which infringes approximately eight inches closer to the neighbors is the side located here. And there's elevations, both the rear elevation, the right elevation, and the left side elevation.
Any other questions on the board?
What's the, what's the exterior?
The exterior, we're looking at hardy plank for right now, but... Hardyboard, depending, I like a...
I think shingles and clapboard type.
The existing siding is aluminum, so I wouldn't, you know, in order to kind of match the appearance...
That would be my clapboard.
Yeah, be, exactly, be a clapboard type appearance. Yes, sir. Yeah, as indicated on the plans.
Any questions?
I have one question.
I have one here from Counselor Lozzy. Dear Chairperson Curly, I respectfully request your honorable body to grant the above-mentioned petition to allow the construction of a rear addition. I have spoken with the petitioner and have not received any opposition from the neighbors. In fact, Mr. Thompson stated that he has spoken with the neighbors and will be bringing letters from the neighbors to the meeting this evening. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. What is the wish of the Board?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Gisano, seconded by Mr. Kalman. Please call the roll.
Do we have to do the hearing? Did we finish the hearing?
Yeah.
Oh my God, you're right. I'm so far ahead of myself.
No, that's okay.
And you can sit down. Anybody else wishing to... Anybody else wishing to say yes to this petition? Anybody else wishing to, to go along with this petition?
Speaker's ready.
Hearing, under hearing is closed, so go, go along. Anyone wishing to in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing, under hearing is closed, so those in opposition. Now, you can call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Kalman?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Kalman?
Yes, to grant.
Good luck, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Dan, you want to start back?
Sure, thank you very much.
Case number 9783, River Street, and Heath's Court. Parcel number 019-306-035. I know this isn't, this is, this isn't Art DeJoy. What's the fellow's name again?
Jerry Raphael.
Jerry Raphael. Owner under option?
Yes, he has, we've signed a purchase and sale agreement with the current owners.
Mark DeJoy.
Mark DeJoy and Peter Aberzese. And I represent Mr. Raphaeli, not the current owners.
By their attorney, Thomas Demarcus. Allow the construction of a multi-use business park containing auto-repair body shop, contractors yard, retail store, fitness center, both construction, maintenance, repair, and general offices upon properties owned R2 and HL.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Thomas Demarcus. I'm an attorney with offices at 56 Central Avenue and Lynn. I represent Jerry Raphaeli, who's the petitioner here, and who's standing next to me today. This property is on the corner of River Street and Heath's Court, and it has been vacant for many a year. Numerous projects have been proposed and probably come before you over the last 10 or 15 years. They range from a sausage factory to other things, none of which have been particularly inspiring. And what my client would like to do is, for those of you, I'm sure all of you are familiar with what Nick Manino did at Lynn Lumber. Jerry would like to do the same kind of a project on this land as Nick Manino did at Lynn Lumber, which I think just about everybody agrees is a very nice project, the Manino project at Lynn Lumber. This, this property is, this dotted line, this is R2 on that side, that's heavy industrial on that side. The lot is almost exactly an acre. The proposed building is going to be about 16,500 square feet, so it's going to take only about 40% of the lot. We've got an eight-foot, this is Curly, strip of greenery here, and a 21-and-a-half-foot strip of greenery here, and another strip of greenery there. Somebody, I might have misstated the height of the building. The height of the building at its highest point is going to be 24 feet. This is a condo building back here, which is four stories. So the condo occupants that have a view out toward River Street are going to see the building, and even on the top floor, they're never going to be able to see behind the building because the building that Mr. Raphaeli proposes to construct is 24 feet. In addition to that, he's going to have an eight-foot wall running around this corner of the property. Cap's Auto Parts is back there. He wants to protect his tenants from a view of, that's not a very well-kept property, and he wants to segregate his property from that property. A couple of other things about the advertisement, by the way, besides the fact that I represent Mr. Raphaeli. We had a couple of meetings, not me, but Mr. Raphaeli has had a couple of meetings, at least two meetings, with the neighbors and with Counselor Capano. And one of the things that came out of the meetings was we had made a proposal for a multi-use business park with several specified uses, one of which was a body shop. The neighbors don't want a body shop. Mr. Raphaeli is very sensitive to being a good neighbor, so we're dropping the request that you guys approve a body shop that you, you approve a body shop here tonight. The other thing is, when I filed the actual petition, which is Mrs. Curly's folder, I had a phrase in there that...
It was correct on the petition, Mr., it just wasn't correct in the advertisement.
Yeah, I know, but we have to vote on whether the name does change. You know, the name has changed, the petitioner, right?
Right. Well, let me point out one other thing.
Then, then listen. And then, and then the topic of the body shop, it's a different description. It's, it's a procedure we have to go through to go forward.
Can I make one other thing, though? Because there's one other thing that's in the petition that didn't make it into the ad, which is, I don't think that it's possible, I don't think that, I can't, right now, Mr. Raphaeli has a purchase and sale agreement to buy the land from the existing owners. Then he's going to build the building, but he has no idea exactly what tenants he's going to get in there. He'll have to build the building, or at least substantially construct the building before he'll be able to attract tenants. Without knowing what tenants or what type of tenants are going to go in there, it's hard for me to calculate, impossible for me to calculate how many parking spaces are required. Each of these 14 bays can have four parking spaces in it, in addition to which there's 24 outdoor spaces, so four times 14 is 56, plus 24 is 80. I don't think we can get any permutation of uses that will require more than 80 spaces. But just in case it happens that way, when I filed the petition, I asked you guys, I asked the Board of Appeals to also approve less than required onsite parking, just in case it turns, turns out to be that way. We're going to have 80 spaces.
Okay, so there's three issues now.
Three issues. I represent Mr. Raphaeli, he's the petitioner, less than required onsite parking, and no body shop.
What was the first issue?
It doesn't say.
It says I represent Peter Aberzese and Mark DeJoy, and that they're, and that they're the petitioners. They're not the petitioners, and I don't represent them. Mr. Raphaeli's the petitioner.
So we have to clear our, so we can proceed.
Right. You want me to make a statement to you guys? Somebody can make a motion to make those changes.
You already stepped, you've spoken reasons for it, right?
I kind of messed up one. It's not only that I represent Mr. Raphaeli, it's that he's the petitioner instead of...
The one question, Mr. Curly, we've got to do that.
I know.
There's three issues, right? You're asking me to make changes.
Mr. Raphaeli's the petitioner, and I'm his attorney. We're not going to go for a body shop, and we'd like approval for less than required parking.
If I'm not mistaken, the commercial is done with square foot, like the volume of space requires the number of spaces you would need for parking.
It still depends on the usage. So in other words, a retail is going to have a different use from a contractor's yard or something.
Correct, but even, even if you use the general model of numbers, you have more than enough spaces. Why would you want to reduce that?
Well, the other, well, the other thing that I'm thinking is, so we have potentially 80 spaces, with 24 outdoor spaces and four spaces in each bay. Four times 14 is 56, plus 24 is 80. However, let's say, let's say that we have, like, Nick Manino has a pet store where he's not parking any cars inside, which I think takes three or four bays, and he's not parking any cars inside a pet food store. So he's not parking any cars inside, so it's possible our, our spaces will turn out to be less than 80. I just want, I, I'm with you that it's hard to imagine that we're not going to have enough.
Mr. Raphaeli, I have to be careful that he doesn't...
He doesn't want...
Well, while you're asking for not an exact number of spaces, which I have no problem with, but it can't be something that one, one elf is going to take up all the spaces. It's not going to be like...
No, no, no.
You have to assign the space.
Right, right.
I'm going to take and choose who's going to be in this.
That's right.
No, I, I'm not going to have a free fall. This is my property. I'm going to occupy three little bays myself with my business, and I'm going to maintain this building. It's my building, so I don't want any craziness. I can see it on the backside of me, how crazy it is. I can't accept that. That's not me.
The three issues that the attorney brought up, and if you stay on the end of this...
Well, the three issues are, the petitioner is Jerry Raphaeli by, by his attorney, Thomas Demarcus. And we are going, we're not going to have a auto-body shop, and you're looking for relief with parking, maybe.
The possibility for approval if we have, if we end up with less than the required parking.
Okay, we're going to have to write that down for our second attorney.
Yeah, it's already in the petition. Yeah, it just didn't make it into the ad.
I made that a phone call.
Motion made by Mr. Kalman, seconded by Mr. Gisano, to change those three memos that we just spoke about. So we can proceed. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Was there a motion in here, I'm sorry?
The motion is that we have to change the petitioner to Jerry Raphaeli by his attorney, Thomas Demarcus, because it is wrong here, that they are not going to have an auto-body repair shop, and that he may need relief in parking.
Gerard Raphael, sorry, hold on. Gerard Raphael. Gerard O.
Gerard O.
They, kindergarten teacher. Shortened the name. Hood school.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalman? Yes.
Okay. The other thing I'd like, I think Mr. Raphaeli passed out extra packets of, individual packets of photos, but this is the existing conditions, which you can see. Look at this mess. Cars parked up here, just whatever this is here. It's just horrible. It's, it's been a mess. It's practically a dump. It's been that way for a long time. And contrast that with, where's the proposed photos of, on the other side of this? Now, this is, this is from the Manino project. This is, we just took photos because that's our standard of what we want, of what Mr. Raphaeli wants his project to look like. He wants it to look as nice as the Manino project at Lynn Lumber. But the contrast between this and this is stark. Obviously, a nice project, you know, the city is, the city is in a revenue crunch right now. A nice project like this is going to add roughly $50,000 to real estate taxes. And one other thing that I think everybody should know here is that because half the land is in a heavy industrial district, we're also going to have to go to the city council for special permits to approve these uses. So you have to approve them, and the city council has to approve them. We're right now scheduled to go to the city council a week from tonight. We're happy to answer any questions.
What's this building going to look like?
It's going to be blocked.
It's like the Manino building. I'm not saying identical, but substantially similar to the Manino.
Metal frame, it's a bit of a metal frame building, yeah.
Well, that's what the shops and things are going to be, right?
Yeah.
But where are the people going to live, the rentals? Where's that building?
They're going to rent in bays, like that.
Oh, that's just, it's all commercial.
Commercial, right.
Kind of get that thought at all.
It's a multi-use business park, or a multi-use business center is what we're asking you to propose.
Another question, I don't think I'm half on it. 16, that's all R2, isn't it?
No, it's half.
No, it is half.
Is it? Yeah. It used to be R4, half R4, half heavy industrial, and then Counselor Capano... It used to be R4, half R4, half heavy industrial, and then Council Capano proposed a zoning change in February of 16, that some of the R4 in this ward, or maybe all of them, got changed to R2.
Why does it say lot area apartment house?
Because it's a division line there. See, the apartment line is district, one side's apartment house district, the other side's heavy industrial.
So, the total area-
Total of the uses.
Total area is 43662, but to the right of the vertical dotted line, used to be apartment house, but it's since been modified to become R2, which is one and two family, and the left side is heavy industrial.
My first option was to do some residential there, but GE has restrictions on the-
There's a D restriction, they can't do residential, this is all GE land, and it's contaminated.
So, you can't do residential in the R2?
Right.
Because that's what the council would say.
Right.
So, you're prohibited from doing that?
Right.
So, and what's the alternative?
Right, there's no alternative.
Are you thinking of doing any retail in any units?
I don't know, I mean, all depends on the volume of cars and what they do, and most of it's more like a storage. You know, I know some people that have some antique cars, they're going to take two bays, or they're going to take about 10 spaces inside, they don't leave anything outside, and I'm going to take three or four bays myself, and then, you know, I'm going to pick and choose who I'm going to get in there, because it's important to me to make sure it's the right people, the right fit for that neighborhood.
And so, the, it's been fallow for years, not paying any taxes to the city at all?
Well, it's paying some taxes, it's vacant land, raw land, but not nearly what it paid with the nice-
And what do you think it'll be if you build this building there? How much do you think it's-
$50,000 a year.
About $50,000 a year of the tax roll?
Yeah, that's what he said, he told me.
And Mr. Raffaelli really, made a really salient point just now, which is that he's going to have his own business there, so he's not going to be an absentee owner. He's going to be there, and he's going to have an extra, he's a first-class guy, does things in a first-class way anyway, but he's going to have an extra incentive for this place to look good at all times, because that's where his own business is going to be.
And the rest of the contract, what about this?
Yes, he is.
It makes you see some white on there for a reason.
What kind of contractor's yard?
I'll be taking up the four bays in the back, and it would be different things. Sometimes I have a mechanic working on the trucks on the inside of the building, I have-
That's your own units?
Yeah, yeah, my own units.
What other kind of?
Well, there'd be like a latrician there, a plumber, I'm thinking, small landscapers that will take space inside the building, you know, they do have two outside spots each for cars.
Would they be storing mulch there and things like that?
No, no, nothing like that, no, they can't store anything like that, only inside. They only get the bays in the inside. No, anything in the exterior would be parking spaces, as you see, and the cars would be parked there.
Any other questions on the board?
I have one question.
Thank you. Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Yes.
So, we've had a couple of neighborhood meetings with this, we got a neighborhood meeting about 25 people there, maybe a month ago, and then we had a follow-up meeting this weekend over at the police station. I think that, I feel confident that Mr. Raffaelli will do a good job with this. We've had a number of different proposals over the years, one was a batting cage, or two junkyards, which they call reclamation facilities now, and another one was a sausage factory, which could have went on the industrial side by right, which would have been a disaster for the neighborhood, and we found another spot, ended up moving to Chelsea. But just to address some of these issues about what might go in there, when Mr. Menino did old Lynn Lumber, I had the same questions, you know, these business condos, I had never heard of that before, and, you know, so apparently, this is a big thing now, if you ride around, you see a lot of trucks parked in front of houses that are not supposed to be there. There's a lot of small businesses where somebody is too big, really, to be working out of their house, but they're not big enough to really lease a garage or something like that, and these business condos are sort of filling that vacuum. So, I was wondering how he was going to be able to fill Lynn Lumber, he had no trouble filling that at all, and I know there's a demand for that, so I don't know exactly what's going to be there, I know that we didn't want a body shop there, there's enough of them anyways, and we're concerned about cars parked on the street, I didn't know if that could be a stipulation. But I'm confident that the landscaping being proposed by Mr. Raffaelli and the nature of the business, especially compared to what possibly could be there in the future, because we're limited with space, and we're getting all kinds of calls from different types of businesses, most of them undesirable, that would be close to a neighborhood, I think that this would, is a good, and the willingness to work with the neighbors. Came to two different meetings, and has talked to some of the neighbors, and I've talked to most of them over the phone, and when I asked for show of hands at the bigger meeting there, everybody raised a hand in favor of the proposal. So, I just wanted to speak in favor of it, I think we'll be able to work with Mr. Raffaelli as he goes along, especially because he's going to be occupying the space itself, and we want a nice spot. I mean, if we have the success that we have with Lynn Way with the other one, I think it would be a successful project, that's why I'm-
So, what is the stipulation?
I just don't want any cars in the street, he has said that he's not going to do that, but I just would like that stipulation on, no auto body, no auto body shop, and no cars on the street, and also that the landscaping will, as proposed, would be, you know, part of the project.
Do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
And he's still doing some late night hours, aren't we, John? And he's still doing some late night hours?
So, the way I was thinking about that, as the businesses go in there, they're going to have to come to the City Council, and I think we'll propose the hours as we go along, you know, obviously, you know, you can't have late night, you know, residential area, but I hate to propose a blanket, you know, time for, because the businesses could be, they're going to be diverse, there could be different types of businesses in there, and I hate to have one time for everybody, you know, so, I think as they come in, you know, we can do that at the City Council.
I just think that can be helpful to you sometimes, if you have a tenant that starts to go too late-
We'll get hours from them.
Yeah.
And then say, okay, these are the hours that are regulated here, this is the part of the park. If you don't accept this on your lease, that you can't lease from us.
Right, right.
And then it will evict you, and then you'll be evicted, and that's how it would work. I wouldn't, you know.
So, can I ask you a question on the auto body? It's also no auto repair, right?
No, we want auto repair.
Because at this, right now, it's a slash-
Yeah, they have a slash, the auto repairs, you know, if it's, if we could ensure that it's indoors, most, the problem, most of the problems, for some reason, are with the body shops, where you see cars out on Alley Street and Penning Street, you know, their grandfather's been there for years, it's the auto bodies, you know. Most of the repair shops seem to do their repairs inside the building, you know, and if we can make that a requirement, I'd be willing to, I think that would be something we should do. I don't know if that's possible, but-
Who's going to pull this up?
I would have the police come up.
I understand with police, a problem like that, if there's a problem, you know, with any, you know, code violations or misuse of property, I mean, they'll be out there.
Are you looking for more auto repair, as in your vehicles, other contractors are repairing their vehicles in their bays, things like that, is that more-
That's more that we're looking at.
Compared to like an auto repair business?
Yeah, like, my business has grown pretty big over the last 10 years, and I have to repair my own trucks due to the amount of trucks I have. I have a full-time mechanic that works with me, yeah, I would have to have auto mechanics.
But in addition, you know, one of the businesses in Lynn Lumber, the Menino project, is Brothers Garage. They do a hell of a nice job. They have, I think that they have multiple bays, they repair all their cars indoors, there might be a couple of cars that are waiting to be repaired, parked outside in an orderly fashion, and I really don't want to give up the auto repair, I'm perfectly happy to give up the body shop, it's a totally different beast than what I've got.
It is, and you got enough problems right on the corner of River Street and-
Yeah. See, what I'm trying to, you know, in some of the houses, we're trying to establish enough businesses like Brothers Garage, the way they conduct their business there, is actually lose custom exhaust, so we have enough of those type of businesses to point to, and so this is what, you know, a repair shop should look like, this is how it should be. We don't really have enough of them, you know, we got, you know, a few, but most of them, you know, are them old garages, and like I said, their grandfathers, you know, they're working out in the street, we try to start them, you know, when we can, and we ticket them, but we're trying to get enough places like the few that I mentioned to say, you know, this is what, you know, it's supposed to be like, you know, so, you know, and I'm expecting that this is, you know, this is what I would expect to have, you know, this particular project.
No, I mean, you know, it is two different businesses. They can schedule when a car, they tell them to come in for repair, they, I mean, for auto repair, yeah, the body shops, you know, it's when the accidents occur, and they are a mess. I look at, you know, commercial and summer, and, you know, so I agree with you 100% that they don't belong in residential areas, and this is still a heavy, this is still mostly residential, so, it's a good old neighborhood.
It is.
So, we would stipulate that it's only going to be used, and any repairs is going to be done inside?
Right. All repairs are done inside.
All repairs inside.
All repairs inside.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing done, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition?
I just, back, I'm not sure, I just leave it out at the end, I don't know, I know most body shops get a lot of insurance checks, but I heard a mention on Commercial Street, how they have to check a lot of the actions.
Yeah, but it'll be-
I hear that over the police station, I don't know, but-
Okay.
All right.
I think they're looking to-
What's his name? What's his name?
If the motion is on, I'd move-
Thank you.
The petition be granted.
What is the wish of the board?
I, I, I-
I know, but I didn't ask it yet, so now say it.
I move, I move the petition be granted.
Did you do the other question?
Motion made by Mr. Countess, seconded by Mr. DeSorno. Please call the roll.
What are the stipulations?
Oh, the stipulation is-
No body shop.
That's right.
No body shop, all auto repairs inside, maintain the landscaping as depicted on plan, and no cars parked in the street, with the stipulation here.
The landscape part of the project, the landscape federal, man, outside.
Right.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. DeSorno?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Countess?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes, to grant.
Thank you very much.
This is like a comedy here tonight. It is. Oh, see Daytona Road. I don't know. I don't know, you want to do Daytona? Go sell and get Capano out of here. What was he here for?
Peter.
What else are you here for, Peter? Oh, he's here for the last one. You, are you going to? All right, he's going to go. Going to do Daytona Road. Case number 9778, Daytona Road, continued from April 4th, continued till April 4th. Petitioner Stephen Howard by his attorney Samuel A. Vitale to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling in zone R1, single-family residential district on a lot, on a lot with less than the required area, 9,660 square feet, and frontage 57,038 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Curly, I'm Samuel A. Vitale, this is Mr. Howard. We were here, as you indicated in the past, the board made some specific requests, and we have been responsible, I think, to those requests. First was that you have a topography done on the right side and left side, in front of the building. Second was that there be a soil condition study done, and then a finished grade plan. I have submitted, but I brought extras. New York Post plans, so let me hand you the outline, everybody can sort of look on. But essentially, what the plan shows is the existing topography, it shows the grading plan as the board requested, and it has the elevations of the street and of the house, let me give you a per on the region. Also, we had an engineer, had what was known as a soil study done, and the soil, I'm still handing them out. Fortunately, you picked a large table to have a meeting.
Once a year.
Once a year. And I think I got one more. Go down that, Mr. Mendez? So, that was done by Brad Barry, who's an engineer, and as I say, it shows the existing soil conditions on one side, and it shows the house set on the lot on the other side. And then, with respect to the soil condition, this is a report, I see the chairwoman has one, this is a copy of the soils report, which essentially says, this is known as like urban ledge, which means that there are portions of it that have ledge that are not inconsistent with what one would find in the area. But the upshot of what the engineer determined is that there is no problem with the adjoining properties, and that, and this is his letter, based on the existing topography, the proposed house location, in relation to the street grade, it will not be necessary to construct any retaining walls if it more conforms to our current site plan. There will be no adverse effects on the abutting properties due to the development of twelve Daytona. Now, the grading plan is shown there, and if you look in the little red in the abbreviations, what is there is that it's graded so that the surface water runoff does not affect the abutting properties on either side, but goes out to the catchpans out the street, and as we had thought previously, but my opinion is that of a layperson or a lawyer, and none is a soils engineer or a structural engineer, but ultimately, those people who have such information have determined that, notwithstanding the concerns that were expressed, that there is no need for retaining walls, nor would there be any notorious effect on any of the adjoining properties. Those are the things that you requested from us. And then, beyond that, with me this evening, I have not only Mr. Howard, but Mr. Toretta, who's acquiring this land for his daughter, Mr. Toretta is a man in the city of Wendy, he's a captain, he runs the meat and bakery, his daughter is moving to Lynn, and these were elevations that you didn't report, but I do have copies of the proposed home. And I'd say that I think that you can see more clearly now, and as we understood, and the board members have questions and inquiries, the home, probably on the lot, the home would fit in the neighborhood, it would be in addition to the street, would not result in an adverse effect on either adjoining property, and so I would think that, given the information that you requested and that we provided, and given the additional information that's been made available, that any of the concerns that the board had, or that the one neighbor had, would be dealt with. I did take note that Mr. Reed indicated to me he had spoken with the neighbor who had expressed that concern. expressed that concern when he was out conducting the study. I provided Mr. LaRopa the copies, a smaller set of the documents that you have, and we would be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
Is your buddy here tonight?
Yes.
Your buddy was here?
My buddy is here. I gave him a set of the documents.
Oh, okay.
How many bedrooms in this house?
Excuse me?
How many bedrooms?
Three.
How many square feet is the structure?
It's, uh, twenty-one.
Nice looking house.
That's the two stories. Are you counting two stories?
Will there be a jack on this house?
Ultimately, I would think so, yes, over there.
I have no questions.
No, this satisfies.
Well laid out.
Yeah, satisfies the issues that I had.
Daytona.
I do want to hear from your buddy. I just, he took the time to come down here, but.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this project? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. You want to speak in favor? Are you in opposition or in favor?
Well, I'm in favor of the fact of the house being built. I'm not here to oppose it. We discussed that before. And I did get a chance to talk with Joe, you know, doing a few things. My only concern again is the stipulation, would it be a containing wall? I wasn't sure whether, you know, we're looking at a four or five or a typical containing wall. But I believe Joe mentioned that he wanted to do is use the foundation, I believe, of the house to kind of ease off, to ease off that elevation, we hope.
Right.
And then at the top, perhaps maybe like a foot or two wall.
If, that's just something that I expressed when we looked into it. Drew did not show that. But if my daughter at some point, you know, didn't want any grade on that side of the house, she may have to put like a one-foot containing wall or something, like a one-foot guiding wall. But it's all a matter of economics, you know. But that's something that's up to her for the future, but the grade is not, you know, I was talking about a giant grade like this.
It's not clear.
Sorry?
It's not clear.
No, no. If you're going to have a level and you have a wall of a foot high, you have to have a foot.
Four-foot grade change one side of the lot to the other.
But that's not, it's, it's the height of the foundation. The height of the foundation is one hundred and three. And on that side, what's the existing level of the height of the lot? I think it's one oh five.
On the left side?
On the right side.
On the right side is one oh four.
Yeah, the height of the foundation is one oh three. So only a one-foot difference.
Right.
Over, over fifteen feet with that. So there's hardly a grade.
Yeah. I think where there's seventeen feet from the, the end of the race line.
I did, yeah, between fifteen and seventeen feet. I haven't really studied those, the initial plans, but yeah, the existing height on the right-hand side is like one oh five, one oh four. And the foundation's going to be fifteen, you know, seventeen feet away and then one foot below that. So it's really.
Right. Not really any change to the motion.
And maybe if we're not going to a divorce, it's not a problem. I mean, I'm not really an expert in soil. How can they buy a garage building and be talking all that?
Yeah, but that's why we went through the effort to make sure that everyone has stood, including you, when the house is right, I mean, stairs are right next to the property in my state. Now, we're concerned about the neighbors too, and I think they addressed it perfectly in the grade and evidence. They spent some time and money on it.
Right.
They did a good job. So you're not really opposed to it?
I'm not opposed to the fact is, I mean, again, my only short word is that here we're coming from a close source of containing wall. That really concerned me.
But the thing, what I'm asking, you're not opposed?
I'm not opposed to that. The only thing, I just wanted to make sure, I did, I did read in here, as far as utilities, we're not very sure the term of the other pipe is, the terrain going up to the house, you know, to the street. I did, I did notice in here it did talk about taking more responsibility to contractors. And the only other thing too, I did.
Well, they have to go to wind water and sewer, and they make the final decision too.
And I actually got plans from Wind Water Sewer, and they're really not sure where it's coming out. They have an idea where to make land in the street, but they're not sure where it is on the house. You get the land for one time.
I know, because they have the text on the, you know, school.
Yeah.
But if there's a manhole, we could connect to that. We don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
So there are options here.
Yep. And then one last thing I just want to mention too, as you know, we had a speech for them. But we really appreciate having you there. The house that was built next to us, some of the, the top has settled down a lot, so we can kind of hold like a manhole now or a hoggle. And I'd just like to see that, that doesn't happen going forward. So whoever does it would possibly do a good job.
Yeah, they would unpack the soil. That's what he's asking.
No, you should.
And they're supposed to do it anyway. But they're gonna have to patch that and make that. So, because that's gonna be a moose. This gentleman understands, he's built, built.
Do you have anything else to say? You want to say? Well, I appreciate your time and what they get, judging me all your quickness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing no one in opposition. I just have a question. In front of this, the garage, what is going to be on the ground?
Probably just, maybe just the stone, but I think for now.
Kind of stone, not hot pot.
Like, sorry.
Okay. And what I'm looking at, is this landscaping going to be this landscaping?
No, that's just generic stuff.
Well, I want to see the landscape.
Landscaping is on the other site plan, I believe, about three to four.
What's on here? Is the landscaping, these little teeny bushes here?
Yeah, how tall are they going to be?
Probably just about a four-foot juniper, four or five feet.
Yeah, it might going to be like an orange special.
Yeah, the basketball size.
It's gonna be scummy, right?
No, this is gonna be, you know, they don't want to create.
It's gonna be.
And division.
What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by Mr. Cowan. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
I think Mr. Mendez is on this.
He wasn't up the first.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. De Sono?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes, to grant. Case number nine seven eight one dash fifteen, Spruce Street. Petitioner Bruce A. Deludis, hopefully, trustee by his attorney Samuel A. Vitale, allowed the construction of a single-family dwelling in zone R two, general residence district on a lot was less than the required area, four thousand four hundred and twelve square feet and less than the required frontage. And who is sitting on this?
Wait, okay.
Huh?
Oh, which one is this?
I know, I mean, so Mr. Wood, you weren't here the last time. Is that what it was?
Oh, it's Bruce?
No, no.
Yeah, he wasn't here the last time.
Okay.
Mr. Curly, I'm Attorney Samuel Vitale. He's in the front row of Bruce's. Bruce has lived on Spruce Street since about nineteen ninety-four. He's at number nineteen in the lot that adjoins this particular lot. He acquired his home lot from the family that had been there for at least seventy years. The Lockwood family owned property on Spruce Street, nearly seventy years, and on this very lot, there was a structure, a home, until about nineteen ninety-two. A single family, a small, disappeared. Teresa Lockwood is the daughter of, Teresa S. Lockwood is the daughter of Teresa A. Lockwood, who acquired the property in the nineteen forties. And like a lot of people in Lynn, when they acquired lots, they had hopes that their family members would someday live in the neighborhood in close proximity, and that's why they bought lots. What happened is the board is familiar. Over the years, the city increased the lot size, also ultimately increased the frontage size. In nineteen sixty-two, the planning board signed a agreement for this, the period of this lot. And the reason the planning board signed it and it got recorded at the registry of D was that it conformed to the requirements. Because in nineteen sixty-two, if you had four thousand square feet, fifty feet of frontage, you could build a house. So Lockwood's had, one lot was said ultimately sold to Bruce. Bruce had his home built by Mr. Whiteheart, and that's where he's lived since that time. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the Lockwoods contacted Mr. Deludis. He just showed me the letter from Teresa. It's a small blue note that said, "My grandson doesn't want to move to Lynn to this lot, and I'm making it available to you and to the other butters, and would you be interested in acquiring?" And, and he did, and he acquired the lot, and that's how he became the owner. Would it for you now? Because what he wants to do is essentially replicate the house that Dave Whiteheart built for him back then and build that house on this lot. But now, the requirement is more than four thousand square feet and more than fifty feet of frontage. As you know, the state law allows if you have five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage, you can build a single-family house provided it wasn't held in common ownership with another lot. So the Lockwood's own at one point, it was in common ownership, so they wouldn't have the benefit, nor did they have the five thousand square feet. He acquired the lot. He wants to build a home. Mr. Whiteheart is here, and the home he want to build is essentially a home Bruce is in, except it's going to be a new home. Now, the, the lot has some unique features, and among them is the, has topography with ledge and a sloping grade. Also, we didn't realize until recently, when a survey was done, that, and we were aware that there was a concern on the part of the neighbor who had an opportunity to buy the lot, chose not to, about the proximity of any house. Well, we now know the reason of that, because we've had a survey. And I'd like to share with you how it impacts the development of any property. This lot is taxed as developable land by the city of Lynn. It's classified as such under the state taxation classification. It's developable land. There's a recorded plan that shows this lot, and as I say, it had a single-family home on it until the nineteen nineties. When a, a survey was finally done, this is the sketch that the surveyor provided to me, and I'll give you copies, but you can see, this is the adjoining house at number eleven. And it encroaches. An addition was built. I cannot find a building permit for the addition. I can't find a variance for the addition, but I know the addition's there. How do I know it's there? Here's the assessor's field sketch. Shows the structure. I have the building permit for the house at number eleven. When it was built, it said it had a fourteen-foot sidewalk. So let me start with that. This is the application to build a house that adjoins. It says it has a fourteen-foot sidewalk. If you've been out there, it has no sidewalk, okay? But what was built, somebody took the plan that John Passons, who was a respected surveyor, had done, and penciled in the building at number eleven when it was constructed. And here's the building permit, and it says, sidewalk line, permit to build fourteen feet. And when you look at the field card, you know, assessors want to get as much revenue as they can, and they, they look to see to get building permits. That's how they assess. And here, it wasn't until two thousand and four that they went out and actually measured, all right? But we went out and measured recently, and as I say, we find that it's encroaching. And so that's also something that's unique, that affects only this lot. Now, virtually every lot on that side of the street is of the same dimension, because they all came out of the same subdivision. They're all above four thousand square feet, five thousand square feet. The character of the neighborhood is single-family dwellings, and what's proposed is a single-family dwelling. And Mr. Deludis, as I say, he's, he's not a stranger to the neighborhood. He's lived there, and he intends to live there. He just wants to build a house on the lot that he acquired when Teresa made it available to him. And so the two forms of relief he needs are for the current lot size requirement, which none of the lots on Spruce Street meet, and the frontage requirement. Those are the two things he needs relief for. I think in terms of the uniqueness of this lot, I say that it's the topography, it's the fact that it once had a single-family home on it, and that in fact is now an encroachment that affects the ability to develop anything on that lot. This, there's two problems. One is, one would be a zoning problem if the only question was requisite sidewalk. But once you cross over somebody's property line, that's a title issue that goes to a different map. Mr. Deludis doesn't want to make anybody take down their addition, doesn't want to make anybody move their house. All he wants to do is be able to build on this lot. But it certainly affects, because if you stood out there and looked at it, and you saw a driveway that went to the addition, that the property line isn't the wall, the property line is somewhere in that driveway of the adjoining property. So not only is there a hardship that affects this lot, there's a hardship that is going to affect the folks next door. But I think one way to get this resolved is to allow Mr. Deludis to do what he wants to do, stay in the neighborhood, build a newer home, build it on a lot that he acquired from the family that owned it for almost seventy years, and have a single-family home and a single-family neighborhood.
Do you have the file? Or do you, do you have the file? Just looking at the, are the pictures submitted?
The address on this is number eleven, and on the plan is number fifteen, number fifteen on the plan and number eleven on the, on the.
That's the building, that's the permit to build the building that's next door that encroaches on that.
To the right, or the enclosure.
Yeah. That was to build a home.
Yeah.
I cannot find in the city records, a permit to build an addition, and I cannot find a variance to put, if you, if you looked at the original size of the house at twenty-eight feet, and you look at the width of the lot, and you build a fourteen-foot addition, as the assessor's show was done, brings you, I thought it brought you to the line. In fact, it's over the line.
So why break it up if you don't plan on doing anything about it?
Because it was recently discovered, and it is one reason why this lot's unique. It gets affected because in terms of the proximity that you can do on that side, Mr. Deludis has chosen to put his vehicles closer to his own home, existing home, to leave that space open. And because.
So what you're saying, Sam, is it's ten-foot-three on the, on the right side of the building? Is what you're proposing is ten-foot-three space?
Right.
And you would have more than ten-foot-three if that house wasn't encroaching? What would you have? What space would you have?
Well, that, that house isn't encroaching that way. I'm saying, no. I'm saying we put the parking away from there. We put the parking on the other side, closest to where Mr. Deludis presently lives.
I mean, and being up there, it looks like you put the parking on the other side of the house, because you've got bigger rock on the right-hand side of the house too, right?
There, there's a second reason that this lot is unique. It's, it's affected because of the topography. One of the reasons you need, have to demonstrate to get any variance, as Mr. Mendez reminds me of often, is that you have to, so some condition that relates to soil conditions, the property slope shape or, or grade, and what you just noted is all.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking you questions. I'm not being confrontational.
No, no, no. I'm just saying to you, so that one of the reasons we think we're entitled to the variance is that there's a hardship that results from the slope, topography shape, and the soil condition, which has ledge. And an additional factor is. And, an additional factor is, that we've discovered, it was like five, okay, that what we thought was close was in fact over the line.
How was the house there before? The ledge, ledge was always there, the ledge didn't grow, so.
The house that was there before was a smaller home, as I understand it, hasn't been there since 1992.
Yeah.
The city atlas shows that it was there from 1924. And the family, the Lockwood family, owned the property and the adjoining properties, and so there were family members. It wasn't, it wasn't, they were all in the same family. And now what's happened is the last surviving member of that family, is the woman who sold to Bruce, she now lives in New Hampshire. She sent him a letter, which she has, that says, "Her grandson no longer had a desire for the property," and she offered it to people on either side of the lot, and he applied.
What happened to the other house?
Excuse me?
What happened to the house that was on the lot?
Ah, it disappeared in 1992, in the early 1990s. I went through the city directory, I went from the city atlas in 1924, and there's no longer a structure there from about '92 to '93 on it. But they had been a home, I, you know, built in 1924. And 1924, the City of Lynn didn't have a home.
And if that old home were to be, attempt to be rebuilt today, it probably couldn't without a variance, I'm guessing.
I don't think any.
The home that was there would be.
Yeah, right, well, unless it had been destroyed by a fire and suddenly came back in time, yeah, whatever. I don't think it was destroyed in a disaster, I think it was taken down.
But even that home couldn't be rebuilt if you wanted to build that today.
Under today's terms.
So no matter what.
Because, because of the fact, essentially, the two factors that have changed, because he meets all the other requirements, they've increased, in 1938, 90, frontage went from 50 feet to 75. And then, over the years, the lot size went from 4,000 to 7,000 to 10,000. The lot hasn't changed since the plan was approved in 1962, it's the same dimension.
I thank you for having it staked.
Excuse me?
I thank you for having the property staked.
I thought you were going to say it wasn't staked.
No, it was. It was a nice surprise.
Well, we had a problem because of the weather. The first time when we tried to do that, it was a snow cover. And that was the other reason, we didn't really know. You couldn't get, well, the points that the surveyor needs to do an accurate survey when the land is snow covered, or he can't find the bounds, or whatever. But, yeah, I asked it at least.
Yeah, it is. I climbed up in the snow, I did see it. Thank you.
You know, the, the plot plan you gave us today has changed from the one that we received.
Which, I don't know which one we received.
Well, this, this is the one we received, where the parking was going to be under.
No, that's, that, Mary knows, that plan.
I'm just telling you, I mean that.
I'm just saying to you that that's not the plan.
Right, that's why I asked you, this is the plan.
But I submitted, and I, that went over this, will be arranged, she said the plan that she sent showed the parking on one side, and I brought copies.
No, so this is the one, yeah, this is the one we're working on. The parking is closest.
Let me make certain that I have.
To 19.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and these were brought, and I thought I emailed you all. You don't have them, I can hand them out.
No, no, it's, it's on your page there, yeah.
Okay.
So you're going to play us the pound of whole foundation in itself, go into that, into that mountain?
Come on. I think the slopes are back, right?
The possible walk off of there.
Excuse me?
Possible, or?
Do you have a benchmark? Do you have a benchmark in the area? Anything to use for a benchmark?
I don't know if I'll have one there. I don't believe so.
Oh, so you don't know what the levels have for this one, all right?
The camera's down here.
I mean, how, how high is the, the first floor going to be off the street?
That's what I'm saying, that's why.
Because if I stand in the street and I'm looking at the property, the ledge is chin height for me.
Yeah, you're about two high than that.
It's really going to over power number 11.
But it's rock, rock for real.
Yeah, but you're not going to change the height of the house, it's not going to drop with the land, it's going to be the same height all the way back, right?
No.
If the house is going to be 20, if the house is going to be 20 feet tall, it's going to be 20 feet tall from that front line.
Yes.
It's not going to drop down with the land. The house is going to get bigger as it goes down.
Right.
It's going to open up like a mouth. It's not going to, the house is going to, it's really going to overpower number 11, I don't think.
It's going to still over the house next door.
It's going to be like your house overpowering this one, right?
I think my stuff is a lot of questions to be answered, and it should be continued. As far as, that's why I asked about a benchmark on grade, is how high it's going to be off that benchmark, so we can go, go to the area for a view of premises and see where that encroachment is. That's all part of the understanding of the hardship in that.
Right.
And that would be, who's the surveyor?
So you're looking for a benchmark? Yeah, I don't know about if he put, started, is it, is elevation? I don't know if it's the top of the hill with a benchmark. Excuse me? He started up to top of the hill with a benchmark.
Top of what, the ledge?
No, no, that's not good, because that's going, you gotta have a benchmark that's kind of.
There's got to be a benchmark at the front of the property.
Yeah, that survives.
I mean.
That isn't a benchmark. If it's going to be removed, it's not a benchmark.
I'm sorry. He found a plan up.
No, no, it could be top of the firehouse, or the ridge of a manhole, or something.
Where we got it from?
I mean.
I have no idea where he started.
Yeah, well, that's what we have to know. You know, to judge the height and how it's going to affect, like Mr. G. Shoners does, how it's going to affect the area.
Okay. So Reed can do that? Yeah. They probably did do it, we just don't know where it is, is that it? We want to talk about it.
Yeah. You ever used on his plan, it was huge, go BM.
I mean, it could be one of the telephone poles up front, like you said, it could be the fire hydrant.
It'd be a pack of K-1 nails.
What is, what do we, oh, just to know what the height of the, of the house is?
Well, just know about the grades, the finished grades and everything.
Did you go up there? Were you up there, that open?
Yeah.
Did you, did you see the ledge sticking out of the ground? They're talking, this is going to be 20 feet above, 18 feet above that ledge. That house is going to be up in the, when you stand on the street, it's going to be on this, it's going to be up.
It's kind of built, it'd be built behind the ledge.
Well, well, we don't know, we don't have all the grades, but we need to.
I understand. But if you look at, if you look at the plot plan, you see that it's. The, the ledge tends to 10.
The ledge is a 10 feet back?
See, in other words, we have to know where the top of the foundation is, and, no, the.
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter where it ends? Because if, you said it's going to be a foot above that ledge, doesn't matter where the ledge ends, it could end a foot from the street, 20 feet back from the street, the house is still going to be the same height?
We haven't until we stop digging.
So now you're telling me you don't know where you put in the house?
I know exactly where I'm putting the house, the stakes are there.
But you don't know what the height is.
We have, Jerry. We have to.
We don't have the exact height of it.
That's why, we have to know that, we have to know that. Exactly.
So, similar, Tombo showing the existing grades?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't know top of the foundation, or whatever it is, and then we can count, we shouldn't have to count anything, it should be obvious, you know, when you lay it out, and it's not right now. It's the problem.
Well, I will request that, Mr. Reed.
Any other questions on the board? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Opposition? Hearing? Are you in opposition?
Yes.
Well, one at a time, come up and give your names and address to the secretary, please.
My name is Rosary Hernandez. I live at 11 Spruce Street. I've owned the property for 12 years. Purchased the property as is, with those additions. I want to make it clear that I have not been in contact with Teresa Lockwood. She has not contacted me to purchase the vacant lot to the left. I purchased 11 Spruce from her back in 2005. So, I do not have, no.
A letter, anything like that?
Yeah, I have no letter, I've never talked to her since 2005, when I purchased that home. The, my, I have many concerns. Number one, of course, being so close to my home, affecting foundation, my roof ceilings and everything else with, with the construction of the home. The fact that there's, there are ledges right so close to my house, I just don't understand how this, how this project would even come to be in such a small little lot. So what I was told back in the day, that there was a little, almost like shed, little cottage that was in the back on that property, there hasn't been anything there since I've owned the land. It's a big topic on why I purchased the home, because I was looking at many addresses in Lynn at the time of my purchasing, and the fact that there's no, no house on my left. I had small children at the time, and raising the family, and, you know, it was definitely enticing for me to purchase that home. This is my husband, by the way.
I happen to own 12 Spruce Street, which is right across the street from 11. And I've also been living there for approximately 12 years, who love the neighborhood, the kids love playing around there, we've been a neighbor of Bruce since day one. I don't have a problem with the gentleman, he's, he's a good neighbor. When he originally bought the property, it was a surprise to me, especially for the price that he got it. Whatever that was doesn't really matter, but it was a phenomenal price. If I were to know that, I would have bought it, just as the empty lot, so nobody else can build on there. So, Mr. Bruce, at the time, said, "Oh, I have no immediate plans to build here. If anything, I would like to maybe put a garage." I said, "Perfect. Remember this monstrous thing is going to go on there." Well, three, four months ago, we became aware that he wants to build, according to him, the Taj Mahal next to our house. And as you can imagine, you walk out to the front of your house, you look over, you're going to see 60 feet up in the air, basically, you're not even going to see the sky till the sun comes overhead at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So, if it was something that maybe he was going to live in state, but from my gathering, he's not going to live in state, he's going to buy and sell. And as soon as that sells, he's out of town. And that's not going well with none of the folks. A body on both sides, from across the street, from George, which is sitting right there, to right behind him, which is going to be affected big time, because of the size of this structure, and how big and how close it's going to be to their property. We have letters from neighbors that are completely against it, but he has said into what it's actually going to be are two totally different things. And that's the problem.
I would just like to know what hardship has come to me for, for you to do this now at this time. Like I said, I've been living in the property for 12 years, and in 2011, somebody did try and purchase that vacant lot, which I did write a letter that is probably here in City Hall stating that I opposed it, as well as Bruce who opposed it back in that time as well. So I don't understand, if you opposed it back then in 2011, why would you be for it now?
We should have, if you don't have your questions, we're sharing.
Do you have a question?
My party doesn't have to answer any of those questions, they've got the boards.
You're very right. You're correct.
These are some of the letters from some neighbors.
Eddie Hernandez. E. X. Hernandez. 12 Spruce Street.
And of course, since we are not lawyers, when we purchase, or when she purchased the lot, everything was addressed according to what should be, surveys were done on the land, we also have title insurance put on, just in case. There was no, said, oh, this, this part of the house was built illegally. That part of the house must have been built, by the looks of it, at least 30 years ago. So, maybe it was done incorrectly, but when we bought the house, everything was, hey, okay. So, it wasn't like I built it over the weekend with a hammer or nail, when, basically, when she bought the property, it was already like that.
It's in the plot.
And it's in the plot plan, it is, when she bought the house, it's there, it's there on the survey as well. So it wasn't like, you just built it two weeks ago, it's been there for 30 years. It's not a new thing that was just added on.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing, is he in opposition? Anyone in opposition?
I don't know. First Christian, I live at the 16th suppose. My question, you know, the other day, it was about digging, and how they're going to remove the ledge, and where the house is going to go, and what else is going on with it, like she said. And I've lived there longer than all these people. I've been there since 1979. There was no house standing there when I got here, you know? Okay, 1979, somebody's been paying the tax for a house that ain't there. All right, I know when George used to live, lived with his brother next door and nipped, and grew up with all their kids, I've been to the whole thing, I wasn't contacted about the property either, being up for sale. And many times, we've talked to the kids about the property.
No, it's not that somebody has to contact you to see if you want a body. I mean, it's not that someone has to contact you to see.
Well, the statement was they contacted the abbot. The abbot, I got the letter.
Sam, if this whole side of the room is, is from the neighborhood, and they're against this, I mean, have you guys tried a neighborhood meeting? Have you talked to the city council?
Bruce talked to the various, Bruce talked to Consul Walsh, Bruce talked to each of these neighbors, he met with these folks who are living on it, but part of it is reality.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
These folks who are living next door complaining about it's too close, I go back to where I started, okay?
I don't want to go back down. I just want to answer the question, did you, did you try to have a neighborhood meeting? I guess that's the question I'm asking.
He did not have a group meeting, he met with individuals. He's lived there since 1994. He's met with these people a couple of times, he's met with other people in the neighborhood.
Sounds like everybody has lived in the neighborhood for quite some time, I, I get all that.
And he, and he met with Consul Walsh. And this is the list of the properties and the lot sizes. They're all single-family homes, and they range from 4,412 to 7,000. This is the street list of the property owners, and it's consistent, the lots consistent, as I say, the planning board and Lynn approved the subdivision in 1962.
And no one's ever done anything with it since then?
No, there was a structure.
There was a shack on it. I know the neighborhood pretty well, Sam, and there was, there was a shack on it, and you, you, even your client's shaking his head yes. And it's always, and the, and the Lockwoods paid the property tax on it as a lot, not no structure ever on the lot for all the years that they owned it. So, you know.
Here's the letter, it's.
I don't, I don't want, I need to see the letter from this Lockwood, I'm, I'm asking, I ask a simple question.
But this is when she offered it to Bruce, saying, "My grandson is no longer interested in the property." This is dated December 7, 2015.
You want to, were you giving that to us?
Well, if I can get a copy, I mean, it's, and here's the envelope it came.
No, that, that's, that's all well and good there. What you're saying here is though she, she, I mean, nobody's debating that she offered you the property and that you purchased the property.
No, I'm saying.
What we're debating is that there was, there was never really a house on this lot.
The letter wasn't, she, she, it does offer the property, but the letter states that she had acquired the property, she had a hope that her grandson would build a house there. And that, that letter says that he decided not to, and then that's when she approached him, and that's the letter that she sent to Bruce.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sidereel up people in opposition, but just a question.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Come up and give your name, please, and address to the secretary.
Colleen Robinson, 27th Spruce Street. We're just concerned, we've been living since 1989, and we're just concerned about the blasting, you know, the ledging, or whatever they do. We've just got a hole inside, we've, we've, a house is older, it's rusty, it's messed up, it cracks very easily, we just have walls fixed, and we don't, they lost them. And it was never a house on that property. We look like we moved in in 1989, it was never a house on that property. And the house that Bruce was losing now, I'm not sure who built it, but it was owned by another, another couple before he bought, he must have bought it from them, their names were, their last names were the virgins, and they owned it for several years. I don't know, I think it was just a couple, one very long, and he bought it from them.
And where do you live in conjunction to this lot?
Um, I don't know.
I'm in the back of the car.
Anyone else who should speak in opposition? Anyone else?
Yeah, Mike Smalley, 21th Spruce Street.
Could you come up here, please? Because it's hard to hear when you're down there for the people on the end.
My only concern with the whole plan was same thing as Doran, is I have a house that's 97 years old and they built the house up on the hill. Even nine years ago, they came in and they dug and did everything they do. I don't know if they blasted, but they, they brought cam and everything. I ended up getting two cracks. He owns a crack wall and a crack foundation. That house was four times farther than what Bruce's house was going to be built on a ledge that, like Mr. DeSano said, is high enough. It's obviously going to have to come out of there. I'm worried about my house. And I'm also wondering what the hardship is here. Well, I mean, I can build a house. What's the alternative? Build a house and sell everything and get out of Dodge? So I don't think it's a good fit for the neighborhood. That's all I have.
One other thing, too, is the water pressure. We live on a hill and as this, unlike the house from the top, and the water pressure, we all got ready to put another house in there and it's going to be just as bad. It's going to be worse.
Anyone else who should speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition?
Is that a question? I'm Steve Don, I live at 31st Spruce Street. And they mentioned, it's a curiosity thing. They mentioned that the, the house at 11 is encroaching on the property to the left that he has. Now, when they built it, they owned that property, so they encroached on their own property? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're telling me? That they encroached on their own property?
Right.
When, when they were selling the property, it should have been surveyed. It should have been kicked in and it should have been known. That's interesting. That's, that's, it's more a question. That they encroached on their own property? How do you approach it?
They did it when we built this house. They owned the whole property. There was no house there and they built this house from out of that property. They only definitely sold that one. The lot was owned.
Did you want to make a statement?
Yeah. Would you, if I ever live on the corner?
Wait, wait a minute. Can you stand up and give your name and address to the secretary, please?
Do you want to come up there?
It would be nice. We could hear you better. Thank you.
I live on the corner of Spruce and Oak Street. I'm at the bottom of the hill. And when you come into our neighborhood, all the houses are a similar size. It's an attractive neighborhood and, you know, we like keeping it that way. And if you're going to build a house up on top of that ledge, it's going to be damn much higher. It's going to take away from a look at the neighborhood. And I live down the bottom and a lot of the, you know, dirt for people's yards and things like that come down. I mean, those are issues that I'm worried about, especially while they're building. And my house is old, is 100 years old. And I don't want the walls cracked when we have to add, or, you know, block a ledge to put in the, to sell. Those are my concerns.
Your house on the corner that's up high?
It's being serviced. I'm on the corner of Spruce and Oak Street, the gray house.
Okay. It's a house.
It's a single family.
Thank you.
Appreciate the salt. I mean, it was a corner today.
What is the wish of the board?
Close it?
Well, this, yeah. Hearing is closed.
If you would get, what sort of ledge removal work? That'd need to be done.
I'm not sure how much ledge you're going to remove at this point. We haven't done a test case. And sometimes, you know, a hammer kick it in there and break it real quick and be out of there. Or sometimes it could be there for a week. But we have no idea how, how much ledge is there or how many, how long it should take to do.
Is there study done? Can it be found out?
Not, unless you start in, on that stage.
Can they, Mr.? Can they, if the project was to go ahead, could we get videotape of the neighbors' houses so if there's any damage done, they'd be liable?
Well, first of all, blasting isn't necessarily.
Without doing any blasting.
There's no blasting, but if there is blasting, it's under, not the control of the Lincoln Zoning Board. It's under the State Fire Marshal, which requires that properties be videotaped, that you post it bones. There are protections that the state affords through the State Fire Marshal's office if blasting is required. And they do what's called a pre-blast survey. They go in, take a video of your basement, of your walls, and then that's before any blasting is done. But Dave's done site work and lots similar or tougher than this one. And this one, I think, is a question of using a chipper, a rock chipper. But until you dig, you don't know how far back that.
Could just drop right off?
Right.
Like it did next door, like on this property?
Right. They built the house that Bruce is in right now, which is the adjoining lot. I mean, the, the land is similar. To go back, if you look at that soil study that was presented in Daytona, it's, it calls the thing, it calls an urban ledge. I mean, this is the character of the area of the soils in the city of LA.
Can they do a survey if you're just going to do the chipping?
Well, that's a question of, I think, the external, right? Yeah.
It could be done.
So that might be a reason to satisfy the neighborhood?
What is the wish of the board?
I, I have a question. A couple of people have stated, one in a letter about the oversized house. If the house was smaller to fit the lot better, is that something people would consider? Or is it just, "No, we don't want anything here on this lot"?
If there was a garage, like originally was, if it was a garage, originally his stock was, then maybe there's consideration because it won't be so close to our property. If, you need to understand that, well, obviously.
You'll mention.
But right now, we have a somewhat decent view to Bruce's house, to everybody else's house. And we like the neighborhood as it is. When the initial idea came out to me, and I was very happy because he, he originally had said that he was going to do a garage that was rated D. I'm like, "Oh, that's great. You know, you bought the land. I'm happy, you know, at least somebody, you know, nice to serve. They got it. That's rated D." But now, it's not a garage. This is going to be a house that's going to basically tower every other house that's in the neighborhood. And, um.
Now, that's why we're going to provide.
It's a one-story.
I don't think, it's a one-story house, but it's a one-story house building, I mentioned, that from the street is way above my head. Once again, we'd be glad to provide expert and qualified persons information, as we did, for example, on Daytona. I could sit here and say, "It's too high. It's not too high." I don't have the training, any expertise. I haven't gone out there and done the measurements, no one in this room has. And so I thought Mr. Callen's request, even though I'm learning about benchmarks, I do know something about surveyors picking up points. I know that Dave is, we did a house in Forest Hill, I think Forest Hill, right on the corner, right? It was number four. It was a tougher site. And so these things can be addressed, but in terms of speculating or guessing, I don't know. But, I mean, to characterize it as towering when no one has done any of the measurements, okay? We'd be glad, whatever the measurements are, the measurements are going to be. And the same way, in terms of the ledge, whether it's a single boulder or granite street, we have no idea until somebody goes in and digs. Those are the ways you get real information upon which to make a decision.
What are you talking about? Test boards?
Well, I'm just saying, what Dave has said to me is that he doesn't know because he doesn't know how bad the ledge extends.
What is the limit? Height can only be 35 feet from ground level, right? From mean low ground.
Mean, mean level. No, no, no.
It could be well over that.
Yeah. It's, I think the proposed house, this is Bruce's house, it's 24 feet.
24 feet?
Yeah. But the mean, the, the, the city allows the structure to be 35 feet above the mean level.
I just heard the number 60 mentioned, so we know it can only be 35 feet from ground level, right?
That, that's, without getting out on a variance or a variance. No one's asked for height there, right? In fact, the height is, I think, proposed at 24.
If you're looking at the flat. If you're looking at the flat, then the ledge is 10 feet from the street. And I'm, I'm back 15 feet from the street. So I'm saying I'm leaving, almost all the ledge and digging that.
What is the wish of the board?
Motion to deny.
Can I say more about that?
I'm sorry.
Motion to deny.
She will make a motion to, uh, second motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. White?
No to deny.
Mr. DeSano?
No to deny.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mr. Chris, Mr. Callen?
No.
And Mrs. Coles?
Yes, to deny.
I have four more.
No.
Three to deny. Are you doing it? Four.
It's over. You can go.
We're all set.
We denied it.
Thank you very much.
Well, they have 30 days to come back.
Put those. Yeah, well, we've seen it. We didn't get a chance. Hey, those, those letters going in five.
I don't know. Yeah, I asked for the letters.
Take care of you, okay? All right, I'll tell Jeff you said hi. Jeff says.
Next continued case, number nine, I've got a question. Excuse me, excuse me. We're stopping a meeting here. Please talk out in the hall. Thank you. Number 977288 Union Street. A petitioner, 88 Union Street Realty Trust. Mahababul Hock, I hope, trustee, allow the construction of mixed-use building, retail store, and three residential units without the required off-street parking requirements in the business district. Yes, they're just clarifying.
Well, no, there was a question one time, so we had to have members.
Right.
Again, the board needs to be the secretary. By the way, actually, someone heard the draw. Something that's unfamiliar to the board.
That's right. And this is the first, the first night alone doing this.
No, 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 but I'm listening.
Yeah.
I expect how is the architect here?
The architect.
Is he here?
The architect, yeah, away. He's meeting in Los Angeles on Wednesday. Yeah, really.
That's how long his case is taking?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't believe it had been in this way. But he, yeah, he had a, there's a hire, right? Kicking. And so I got shown the thing because Mira asked one of the question, and I said, "If he shows up, we're in serious trouble."
I have one, I have one quick question before this goes way off the deep end. How can they change the whole building brick?
Excuse me?
Why did you make the whole building brick?
Brick?
No, why is the whole building brick? Half of it was siding, half of it was brick. It was beautiful.
No, no, no. I agree, and everyone will tell you, that one story would be brick. Before I tell you.
The last pictures of it were perfect.
Yeah.
We were just talking about the apartments, and you guys changed the outside. I just, I have to ask that question.
Well, again.
I'm not, you know, I'm not going to.
Don't, and don't point fingers.
So you're not opposed to make it the way it was looking?
No. In fact, you're totally fine.
You're pointing, no.
I'm just asking. I'm just asking that question. You're not opposed to make it the way it was, right?
I could act.
Yeah, right.
I'm beginning to, I'm beginning to, you're talking. Some of us are talking halfway that you said, some of us like, hey, they want brick out there. So we said, okay.
No, wasting, you're wasting your time now. I was, everyone here, I believe, they know it's going to be one story brick.
That's sufficient to the board. Is that, that would be sufficient?
It's sufficient with, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about anybody else, but I.
That's all we have for nature.
Yeah, that's the way, it looks great.
So the other thing, the other big thing is the foundation. The foundation, a new building should have a new concrete foundation that doesn't show that. They were supposed to show up here tonight, the foundation page, the foundation page, and I don't see it. I'm like, where's the foundation page?
There's an existing building.
No, no, don't talk about that. I want to see the foundation page.
We're going to save it.
It's an existing foundation. It's stone. And I'm telling you right now, need a support. Just make it very clear because I asked for a section through the building and you don't have it.
They have it.
No, you don't. Where is it?
Basically, you heard.
No, I wanted a section through the end wall. Listen to me. Through the end wall on the Union Street and you don't have it. I didn't, I didn't see it.
He studied all these plans at home. That's why he's not looking at them now.
Page number seven.
What I want you to have, you don't have, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, no, that isn't what I wanted. And, and Mr. Italy, I went through it twice, three times with him, but that's how it, that's one of them. But it doesn't show from the bottom of the foot and up to the top of the ridge. I can, I can see that, but I'm not going to talk about that.
Doesn't it start at the foundation?
I'm telling you right now that that building has to have a new concrete foundation in it, all around it. And that stone is going to come out of it.
You can't use the existing one for the building.
You can't use the existing one. I'll tell you why. I used to build them in the early '40s, the late '40s. I know how they're built. They can't support anything. You put brickwork on something like that, you have a million cracks in the wall. And we don't want to have that downtown. It should be a new concrete foundation. If you don't want to do that, I'll make a motion to deny.
I thought the issue was how many apartments there were.
Well, that's one of them.
There've been many issues.
No, no.
We tried to address them all.
Yeah. The other thing is.
We're trying to address the concerns of all the members.
That's going to be straight.
And then, uh, the chairwoman has made a concerted effort with respect to speaking to the council. And I think that we, at least the two of us, have an understanding, to answer your question, there are going to be three one-bedroom apartments. And that, there's a couple of letters from Consul Kaluchi that say that, okay? And, and I had one conversation with him, and this is all post.
Did we have a letter from the city council?
There was a letter, more than one letter. Mrs. Crowley, a senior.
Yeah, there is more than one.
From, from council.
Three apartments is what the city council is approving.
Three, one-bedroom apartments.
And one apartment was proposed.
Yeah, and then I think there were, I think he sent two letters at least that said that.
Two on the second floor, one on the first floor.
So that was, right, and none in the basement, that was, that's what he told me, okay?
Because I thought that's why you were here today.
And then, well, and that was one of the issues, correct. And then we were asked about doing the section, and we did the section, and then we were asked to bring the plans in that side, we brought the plans in that side, then we were asked to bring a brick, uh, we brought a brick, and so...
Yeah, ask that over here.
Uh, what we're trying to do is address what we think are the concerns of the board.
But also here...
When you use a brick, please don't use cord brick, use solid brick.
Mr. Mendez, one of the things we did ask for was need foundation plan certified block.
Okay, yeah, I, I was, no, we run that.
Wasn't there a page in there that's got the foundation?
That's that.
Just tell me if you can show me. Page, what are you, number three?
No, because it's one sheet.
Let's see, page...
They don't have a floor plan of the floor of the foundation.
So that's this page three. Page three.
I mean, I can't use a needs, they could never find them later on, crack easily.
So there's the foundation plan.
Why do you think they put the holes in the brick? Why did he put those in the brick, do you know?
For the water to, for the water to get in there, right?
No.
It's a banana brick, that's why, it's a banana, why did he put the holes in it?
Yeah.
Is that what he asked?
Yeah.
It's a banana brick.
No.
That's why, I mean, it's a brick.
There's one reason only, lighten the load for shipping, it's cheaper to ship a brick like that.
And it's a late brick, I like that. And it's not structural.
No, no.
I like that.
Isn't that what the purpose of the bricks is, is to be...
Sometimes they use construction, sometimes they use banana, it's a banana.
Yeah, getting you to a level of detail.
You can use them if you want, but I disagree.
This is not the bricks.
Yeah, just, they make solid ones like that.
No holes, no holes.
Yeah, no holes. They make solid ones, the brick was good, the measurements, everything, and it compares, it looks like what's on the picture you have. You know, probably, get solid, no quarters. I know, I don't, I don't force you to that, but it's only there to lighten the load when they ship them, and there are problems around the wing, but...
We didn't know already, we'll ask.
Yeah, in fact, we got a bunch of, we got different prices in terms of the...
Yeah, yeah, but they're only going one story on it, you're not going a whole thing.
Why do you have skylights in the attic?
No, we, we, I, I just forgot, things happen in the last six years, people just need to have to, have to have the chip to remove the skylights. You asked me to take it out, but...
Well, why would you put skylights in the first place, in an attic? Why would you put skylights in an attic?
Yeah, in the skylight. I think it was a little, we, Tara, we were putting the beginning, we don't need it.
I know, you don't need it.
Yeah, it's, it's an attic, because I...
Something happened, uh, last eight, nine days, about, he was in hospital, not him, the person, and it didn't change it, but I asked him to do that, so I broke that to it.
Well, you know why, it makes me feel like, oh, we can have a couple bedrooms up here, we have windows. I know, but I'm just telling you, you don't have no idea the things that come before this board and what happens, so we get to be, you know, a little leery sometimes, and, and I don't know why you would need skylights in an attic, so...
How can we finish it tonight?
Let's take those out.
What other questions do we have here?
I have no questions, I just say, I'd like to finish this tonight. How can we come to a compromise so we can vote? These guys have been here before us, I think, enough, there's still a few issues, but what can, can we pass this tonight, subject two?
Well, he asked the farmers to put a brand-new concrete foundation.
He's up to you, because... Acting across, I can't answer.
He's the owner, he's the owner.
How about a stone wall stand? Is it all stone?
As far as I'm concerned, that's be taken.
I think it's, they, existing, uh, stone wall can't take the road.
No, it can't, how do you know? Tell me how you know.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, let me get answers to the question, because I might have a compromise that'll suit both.
They show a horn beam on top of the wall.
I know what they, they're pouring, you want to pour a concrete cap on top of the stone wall, because it's a level, because it just levels it out so that you can build easily on it. What if you poured in front of the stone wall? What if you poured a new wall in front of the stone wall so you wouldn't have to get rid of it? And poured the barn beam over the two, and built off the, built off, so that way, because to get rid of the old stone foundation and to do all that is an, is an exorbitant cost, and I agree with Mr. Callen to where he wants a new foundation, what if you just poured a new wall inside of the existing stone wall? You're going to have the new wall cost, but you would not have the old wall removal cost. So, I'm, if that, I don't know, if that...
Yeah, but that means they have to shift the building.
But they have the banana, the wall is, is a foot thick.
Yeah, I just don't want any part of that building not on a new foundation. If they're using the other part of the wall for retaining wall, that's something else, is that what you're talking about?
What, well, basically, when they do those walls, as you know, those walls are more so to stabilize the stone wall.
What wall?
When they, what, what happens now is, a lot of times, instead of removing the old walls, they'll pour a new wall right in front of it.
Sometimes they do.
Right, and that's, that's more so to stabilize the, inside, stabilize the stone wall, so you're still going to pour the overslam over.
No, that isn't going to work.
I guess my question is... I agree with you, this is what I would like to do, if you pour a wall, connect both, both the walls, anchor it, the existing wall have collapsed.
No, I don't want to hear anything.
Add more door, this would stabilize the over...
You gotta take that wall out of there, as far as I'm concerned, I want my support, that's what I'm saying.
I'm going to connect, connect both the walls.
No, I've seen that done, it doesn't work out.
I mean, I do, you know, I understand and I respect, um, your knowledge, but, you know, we're into areas that the building department would make their decisions based on, they would, they wouldn't get permits unless, unless the building department felt that, that the, that that foundation couldn't take the load.
I used to build one of them...
Oh, I know.
Years ago, and you know, they never use hardener, they used to pack it all in the earth, and they'd bone it to face, and that was it, so there's no strength in the walls.
And the first question that we believe is that they asked about a year ago, I mean, I wrote in my letter saying, the existing wall can't resist the load, because it is going, it helps stabilize the overturn, right now, there's nothing holding it down, so it is not going, so, what, we don't put much load, but that's going to happen.
Yeah, all right, you can talk online, you're not going to convince me, maybe you might convince somebody else.
No, I'm just, actually, I have a letter to the city, I'll give you this number a year ago.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's end that, and we'll start on how many units, right, how many units is going to be in there?
Three.
Three one-bedrooms, right?
Excuse me?
The, the, those drawings show three one-bedrooms.
And I think, Mrs. Curly, you should have, you see those two letters in Calucci?
Yes, oh yeah, I got them right here.
Oh, all right, okay.
There were three one-bedrooms, and it looked to me like they were actually pretty open floorplans, which would be pretty hard to manipulate, so, doesn't look like they're going to reverse them in any way easily, that's what, that's what they look like from the, from the drawings that I reviewed, so...
How many square feet are you on?
Nine eighty-five, I think.
Yeah, under, under a thousand, they were, they were just...
One eighty-seven. Will be nice one-bedroom, most.
Yeah, no, they were actually pretty nice floorplans, you guys did a good job with them.
Yeah, I remember.
Is there any way we can continue, I mean, continue this tonight, you know, get it over tonight, and providing that the building department feels that something can be done with the foundation?
I'm not going along with that, no, no matter what they say, I'm not...
They're not going to get a permit from the building department to build unless they certify.
Unless it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what I'm trying to get at. The building department will make that, right, will make that determination, that's why there's a building department, yeah.
You understand.
And I think what he said is, a year ago, it was more, he met with Roger, and they talked about that.
Before I started the project, I met with Doctor, because you perhaps said, no, I don't think projects would have, you know, I have a lot of experience with this, you know, and I know me, let's say it all.
I have a letter here from Councilor Calucci. Dear Chairperson Curly, I would like to go on record in support of the above-mentioned petition to allow two one-bedroom units on the second floor and one-bedroom unit behind the store. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. Richard Calucci, counselor of Ward Four.
I will make a motion to grant.
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Make a motion to grant.
I second the motion to grant.
Please call the roll. With stipulations, right?
You are, hold on, you guys are going to change the building to fifty-fifty, like the old design?
Yes, yes.
Half siding?
Yeah.
Half brick?
Yes.
Correct?
Whatever your secretary, he says, ah, the stipulations, we rely on those.
And I'm going to stamp it, and I'm going to sign it and date it, or whatever I do.
We don't even begin it till we get from her, she says it is.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
No.
And Mrs. Curry?
Yes, to grant.
Thank you.
Is that letter in there?
Yes. All right, we're not finished yet. Quiet. Please, please, thank you. Two-ten, two-twenty-six Blossom Street Extension. Petitioner David Zella, trustee Rosemarie Realty Trust by its attorney Samuel Vitale, allow use of property-zoned waterfront one A for operation of a car rental agency.
We'll get you a seat and desk right there, Sam. We'll get you a seat and desk right there, you can just set up shop right there.
We were here, when were we, who were here before on this issue? Because at that time, uh, Mrs. Zella had an opportunity, and still does, to have his tenant in his business office park, a company that rents vehicles, and I just saw this, by the way, the enterprise is doing what they call ride sharing, which is a new concept where people take a car from point A to point B. And one of the reasons this site has been attractive, as I pointed out, even at the time we were here last, is because of the ferry, and that the hope would be that people would be taking the ferry from out of Boston, come to Lynn, and then want to move around and go somewhere in Lynn, and they could rent a car for an hour, or two hours, or a day. As you know, next to this building is the Hertz Rent-A-Car, and across the street is the Enterprise Rent-A-Car, that used to be where the Hertz Rent-A-Car is now. So, what's changed? What changed is the, this waterfront district, and when we went, and we were here before you, uh, the last time, we pointed out that there's no specific, um, category, uh, for auto rental, even notwithstanding the fact that not only those two there, there are others on, on the Linway. And, uh, so, so at that time, the building department suggested, Mr. Donovan had a letter, and I think you have a copy of that letter, in my, with my application, Mr. Donovan said, I think you need to go get a use variance, and then when we were here before, the board said, well, we don't, we don't feel comfortable doing this, we think you need to do whatever, and so we followed Mr. Donovan's advice, and we applied for a use variance. Now, you've had many use variances involving this waterfront district in front of you. You had a tremendous case involving a landscaper who wanted to go on the same side, and you've had, I think Mr. Attorney Demakis had some people, you've had, uh, the Starbucks, you've had a variety of uses, and, and I credit Councilor Capano, because in my dealings with him, and Mr. Zeller and I met with him, and his concern was that there be no auto repair, which there is not, and that there be no auto sales, which there is not, and that there be sufficient parking, which there is. We took all of the, uh, the tenants that are currently at the office park, we applied the parking formula to, uh, to each of the tenants, because the, the city zone ordinance says that for parking, the hole is the sum of its parts, and we came up with like twenty-three extra spaces, using that, and so, we, we talked with Councilor, uh, Capano about that. These are the present, uh, since I did this, I wanted to add that, these are the present, uh, tenants, and you can see the different uses that are there, there's a taxi company, uh, there's an attorney, uh, there's a medical, uh, facility, these are the current tenants, and, and I think you have to also understand, and I think, and, uh, that Councilor Capano did understand, uh, the Linway is one-sixth of the revenue of the city of Lynn, and, and when, when you want to know why, all right, Mr. Zeller's property, his taxes, taxes, owes thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, and here's a copy of his taxes. So pay thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, we all know that the tax is not going back, uh, he needs to have his building rented, and so, a company that's in business of puberty, and business in, uh, frame of the M, wants to come and have an office with two women, or two men, or whomever, working, uh, leasing cars on a sure-term basis, and renting cars, and I think when we were here, showed you the, uh, the table of uses, and I could find no specific use that related, uh, to, to this, so I couldn't find it allowed, I couldn't find it disallowed, I couldn't find it period, even though there are many uses listed in the table of uses, and so, uh, I think the building commissioner's suggestion that we come to you, uh, was a good one. So here I have, and I highlighted, all right, this is the table of uses with the permitted uses, and you'll see in a couple of places, I marked two that I thought might be close. One is general offices, uh, and the other is, uh, retail stores. So these are, uh, two uses, in fact, Mr. Gisano had a suggestion about one, but I pointed out that Mr. Zeller's in the insurance business, he sells insurance now, and when you rent a car, they sell you insurance, and so, it's not inconsistent with what he's doing now, uh, in terms of selling insurance, that's one of the uses of this site. So what, what is a rent-a-complex? And if you recall, we talked about, uh, what's each in our block?